Got my full charge.
We're ready.
All right, great. Mrs. Wolf, Mrs. Chavis, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are. Good evening. It is now 6:02 PM on Tuesday, December 17th. And I would like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome those who are participating in the Board of Education meeting in person and those watching the meeting via live streaming on YouTube. We would ask that anyone addressing the board to please use the microphone at the podium and to identify themselves for the record. As a reminder, the link to this meeting is on the district webpage under Board of Education. The streaming will run through the end of the meeting. In the event there is a disruption in the streaming, I will pause the meeting until it is reestablished. Before we continue, I would like to request a moment of silence for the loss of our student, Mr. Brian Guerra, student at Valencia High School. We had some students lost in some of our neighboring school districts and students in the tragedy in Madison, Wisconsin. Please know that our thoughts and prayers go out to all those who are affected. So if you would give me a moment of your time, please. Thank you very much. We are on to item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are pleased to have the Los Llanes High School Student Representative, Ms. Kaylee Burt, here to lead the pledge. So... We will do the pledge and then you'll read her bio. It's Christmas. Please be seated. Mrs. Chavis, now would you read Ms. Hayley's bio?
I sure can. Mikaylee Burt is the pledge leader and student representative for Los Llanes High School. Mikaylee is a senior at LLHS and has been attending Los Llanes schools since kindergarten. Mikaylee lives at home with both her parents, Rhett and Kristy Burt. Mikaylee is a student athlete at LLHS. She is a four-time captain of the girls soccer team and has earned first-team All-District the past three seasons. She has also earned second-team All-State for the past two seasons. She is also a member of the LLHS track team meddling sixth place for the 400 and 800 at state. Mikaylee is a member of National Honor Society, where she volunteers her time throughout Valencia County. She is employed as a student mentor for the Los Llanes School Special Services Department. In her free time, she volunteers as an assistant instructor at Horse and Around Therapeutic Riding Center, where she helps disabled adults and kids learn to ride horses for therapy. Mikaylee is currently committed at Adams State University to play soccer and continue her education. She plans on earning her Bachelor's of Science in Kinesiology and continuing her education to earn a doctorate in physical therapy. Her dreams would be to play professional soccer and work as a physical therapist in her own clinic. Mikaylee embodies the spirit of a tiger. She is kind, hardworking, dedicated, and zealous. She loves to make everyone around her smile. Thank you, Mikaylee.
That is awesome, Mikaylee. We're on to item C, the announcement of the meeting. Mrs. Chavis, would you please announce the meeting?
This meeting has been announced in accordance with the open meeting's resolution and is a legally constituted meeting of the Los Llanes Schools Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Item D, the approval of the agenda. Mrs. Chavis, are there any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to make some changes to the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make, I would like to move item L S to follow H. Further, I would like to ask that we move items E and F to follow L S. L five, sorry, I cannot read my handwriting, L five.
So, you're, you are proposing that we take L, item L five, and move it to after item D? Is that correct?
Correct.
And then we would have item G, item H, then item E, and item F?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I would stand for a motion regarding the approval of the agenda as amended by the acting superintendent.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Simoia.
I am moved that we approve the agenda as amended by Ms. Chavis.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, I will call for the vote, Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Okay, so now we are going to move up L five. This is in the interest of time, folks. So, one of our attorneys is here to help the board with the discussion. So, L, item L five is under the Finance Committee items, and it is the approval of the Revised Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between Los Llanes Schools, the Pueblo of Izleta, and the University of New Mexico Valencia Campus for Tiwa Language. I would stand for a motion to approve item L five. We sure could take a two-minute break. We are, the board is in recess at 6:08 PM. Second first, and then we can take a motion on it. We're back in session at 6:09. This is, we've made a few movements, so we're going to try this again.
Okay.
We have just completed the approval of the agenda. We are now going to item G, which is public comment. Let me get to that. I apologize, folks. As per say, there we go. Mrs. Chavis and Mrs. Wolf, how many speakers have signed up to provide comment at tonight's meeting?
We have three.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Before we move to public comment, I would like to remind our audience of the board's procedures for handling public comment, which are found in Board Policy B 2150-BEDH. Public comment is limited to five minutes per individual speaker. However, the board president may further restrict or waive these time limits based on the number of speakers. The board welcomes public input. The board does not prohibit public criticism or comment upon personnel matters, but does discourage personal attacks on board members, staff, personnel, or other persons. Presenters are cautioned that statements or representations concerning others that convey an unjustly unfavorable impression may subject the presenter to civil action. Any person making public comments shall be solely responsible for the content of his or her comments. The board neither adopts nor assumes responsibility for any comments made by individuals during the public comment section of the board meeting. Our first speaker will be Mrs. Amber Rodriguez. Would you please join us at the podium? Just leave it, Luta. Okay. You can hear me?
Okay.
We can.
Good evening, Madam President, and members of the Los Llanes Public School Board of Education, Acting Superintendent, Mrs. Chavis, and the rest of the community members. Thank you for letting me, having the opportunity to speak. This evening, I came, I come asking to you to open your heart to the children and teens of Valencia County and the state of New Mexico. I pray 2 Timothy 1:7 over our children and teens. For God has not given them a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and of sound mind. I pray, Lord God, over the minds over our children and teens. May they be protected by the precious blood of Jesus Christ. I pray Romans 12:2 over our children and teens. And may they not be conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of their minds, that they will be, that they may prove what is good, acceptable, and the perfect will of God. I pray 2 Corinthians 10:5 over our children and teens, casting down every imagination and every high theme that exalts itself against the knowledge of God and bringing into captivity every thought to the obedience of Jesus Christ. I pray, Lord, as we as parents, counselors, educators, administrators, community members, we open our heart genuinely to support our children and teens that are in need. Whether it be in counseling or just a cheerful word. And just lend a helping hand. Let us be open to uplifting each other and building each other up according to Proverbs 12:25. And it states, anxiety weighs down the heart of a man, but a good word cheers it up. I pray and I seal all these scriptures over the children of Valencia County and all of the state of New Mexico. And I also pray for the families within our county. In Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Our second speaker tonight is Dr. Hannah Lee Victoria Garin Gugliano. And her topic is Corrections of Student Records and Public Service as Properly Identified. Would Dr. Gugliano please join us at the podium? Jane? Apparently that is absent. Our third speaker is Ms. Desiree Pareja. And her topic are safety concerns.
Hello, my name is Desiree Pareja, the mother of Mason Pareja, who is the nine-year-old autistic child that left her Boski Farms Elementary Campus on 12/2/2024. He made it .7 of a mile down Esperanza, all the way to Highway 47, proceeding to completely cross the intersection, almost getting hit by multiple vehicles, and thankfully saved by a young construction worker, 18-year-old Irvin Varela, after being gone for roughly 20 minutes. As this was happening, staff was in a panic, looking for my son and trying to get ahold of the SRO. But your SRO was quote-unquote unlocking doors at a church for carpet cleaners at 155 Boski Farms Boulevard, which is 1.9 miles from the school. He was not in range of his radio, leaving his job duty to perform another job not related to the school. When the SRO left, all gates were unlocked and open. He didn't secure the campus. He failed his job duty, which is completely unacceptable and unreal. Those gates should have been locked and secured, and the SRO should have been on campus, or at least in range of receiving calls on his radio, and just simply making sure that the campus was secured, not only for my son, but for all other students and staff at this school. Your fencing at Boski Farms Elementary is only about three and a half to four feet tall. Do you know how easy that is for a child to climb or for some random person to jump over? There are gaps between the road and gates in some areas big enough for a small child to go under. If you're going to have fences this small, let's just hire someone who's fully committed to their job to secure their duty. I am so thankful this did not end in a tragic way, and I hope and pray that the Los Llanes School District learns from this and goes to every school in our district to make sure each campus is safe and the SROs are fully committed. There are a wide variety of students at each school, some with special needs and some with impulsive decisions. Why not just make our school campuses safe for our students? We trust you with our children. How are we as parents supposed to feel safe when fences are only four feet high, left open majority of the time during school hours, and our security officer doing side jobs during his full-time job? As a special needs mom with a son who is autistic and nonverbal, who can't tell me what is going on around him, it's hard enough sending him to school to begin with. Now this happens, it's unreal. Does the Los Llanes School District not think about our special needs children during renovations or even during funding? Our Boski Farms Elementary has the CEEL Special Education Program, and it doesn't even have a handicap-accessible playground. Have you thought about children with mobility problems or that are simply just in a wheelchair? They have to sit at recess and watch the kids play on a playground that they can't enjoy. Our CEEL class hasn't enjoyed a field trip in a couple years, which I'm not blaming any staff from the school, but it's hard for 12-plus kids with special needs ranging with different disabilities with only one teacher and five assistants in a completely different setting. Why can't we bring a field trip to them to enjoy like all the other kids? I'm not only speaking on behalf of Boski Farms, I'm speaking for every school that has special education or special needs. I never hear this district putting any thought into our children with special needs. Our kids are important too, and just as every, every other student in the Los Llanes School District. And just a thought, maybe rotating your SROs that work in elementary schools every month would be better. This way, they don't get too complacent in one area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Pareja, for coming and visiting with the board. We are now on to item H, the approval of consent items. I would stand for a motion regarding the consent items.
I'm sure I move that we consent the agenda with the exception of item J, presentation of board policy, first reading, B 900, Board Organizational Meeting. Item K, discussion with possible action to pause plan to close RGE. And item L five, approval of Revised Memorandum of Understanding between Los Llanes Schools, the Pueblo of Izleta, and the University of New Mexico Valencia Campus for Tiwa Language.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. Do I have a second?
I'll say again.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Mr. Vickers has moved, and Mr. Tally has seconded to approve all of the consent items as listed on the consent sheet, with the exception of item J, K, and L five. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, I will call for the vote, Mr. Vickers. How do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
I vote yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. We are now going on to topic L five. This is, for those in the audience, if you're wondering why we are moving this, because it sounds kind of haphazard. One of our attorneys has graciously agreed to be with us tonight. And being on the road and having many districts to respond to, we want him driving safely, so he has to head south to the state, to the very corner. So this is part of the reason that we're moving this up is to make sure that he's out of here a little bit safer and in the interest of time. So, item L five is the approval of the Revised Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between Los Llanes Schools, the Pueblo of Izleta, and the University of New Mexico Valencia Campus for Tiwa Language. I would stand for a motion to approve the Revised Memorandum of Understanding.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Is there any discussion?
Dr. Rosowski, a couple thoughts on this. So, I understand the importance and significance of teaching the Tiwa language in the schools. I have some concerns, though. I voiced these, a couple of these last school board meeting, partially because I, in the past, other acting superintendents relayed to me that the funding for this is federal funding. And the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VI, strictly prohibits discrimination based on race, color, or national origin in programs or activities that receive federal financial assistance. If the funding for this truly comes from a federal program, we are going completely against Title VI, which prohibits it. So I, an understanding of where the funding is coming from, as well as there are a few other concerns that I have. If we allow this, we are setting a precedent. Okay, we already are setting a precedent. But if we continue to allow it, we set a precedent. What would happen if me, as an independent, independently wealthy person, which I'm not, but if I were...
You started that with you.
Correct. If I were an independently wealthy person, what would prohibit me from coming and sponsoring, say, a German class, where only those of German descent could, could learn? Right? I, I understand that our school has, the only other language option is Spanish. And other schools have a bunch of other languages. I grew up, the school I went to had French and Spanish and German and Latin. We had a variety of options. The majority of the students at the high school have one option. I, I understand the importance and the, and the the things that this helps propagate as far as the, the Izleta Pueblo propagating their culture with their, with their descendants and things like that. But I also think that allowing some people to take this course and get credit and discriminating against others is, is a big concern mine. I, if they weren't getting credit for it, if it was, it was a class that they could go and learn in a great place, right? They could take it to the high school, and it would be a, a great facility where they could do it. But allowing them to get credit where you don't allow the rest of the population to do so is, in my opinion, is discriminatory. And it is, instead of being diverse, equitable, and inclusive, we're actually being divisive, exclusive, and inequitable, in my opinion.
Thank you very much for your thoughts. Is there any other conversation before I invite our attorney to help us out with this? Do you have any other comments? Are there, is there any other comments or questions so that he has a full range of what he needs to respond to?
Well, I, I did owe his, Mr. Tally's comments that I don't see the problem with allowing other students to participate in the class if they so choose, if they would like to learn the language. And the MOU specifically says that only Izleta tribal members may take a class. So, I do have issue with that.
Thank you. You're capturing these notes?
Yes.
Yeah, Dr. Rosowski. Yeah, I, I just would like to see, because the sacredness of that language and the ability to share it within the culture was the intent and point in introducing this. So I would like to hear from a legal perspective how either the students are protected or how the district may be violating its civil rights on that.
Yeah. I invite you to address our concerns, sir.
Right.
And we don't have a timer up for you.
Thank you, Madam President, board members. Thank you for the questions. And I will attempt to, to address all of those in context. Let me first start by looking at the MOU. I have reviewed the MOU. I have made edits to the MOU. The edits that have been reviewed by the Pueblo's Council's office and all edits that I've submitted have, have been accepted by the Pueblo's Council's office. That said, to summarize the, the edits, it's really putting this program on equal footing it's really putting this program on equal footing with other school offered programming, meaning that when there, when there's an agreement for the students participating in this program to to have materials, supplies, field trips, training and other needs, it's on an equal footing with with other programs that provide supplies, field trips, training, other needs. In the M O U, it talks about professional development training for the language teacher, the Tiwa language teacher. And I added language consistent with the amount of training, in-service days and professional development provided to district teachers. So it's not providing benefits above and beyond other programming or other teacher requirements, but on the same same basis. In addition, I added a paragraph that states if if this memorandum of understanding or portions of the memorandum of understanding are found to be invalid pursuant to federal law or regulation, the laws of the Pueblo of Isleta, the laws of the State of New Mexico, or the regulations or policies of the New Mexico Public Education Department and the New Mexico Department of Higher Education, that's because we have the Los Lounas campus involved. The parties shall have the option to immediately amend this memorandum of understanding to comply with such laws, regulations and policies or immediately terminate the the memorandum of of understanding. Other edits are just sort of typical lawyer edits. Preservation of the protections and sovereignty that not only afforded to the Pueblo, but also state governmental political subdivisions. A lot of lawyer talk in that, sorry. So those were the types of edits that that were made to the M O U that I felt were were appropriate for the M O U. So let's get behind the the M O U and answer the questions raised by the board members. So Board Member Tally, you you cite the Federal Civil Rights Act. I'm conversant with that. I've handled litigation with with regard to that. In addition to that federal law, there are also other federal laws that that make distinctions. And by by federal law, the distinctions are there are types of preferences that are permitted, that are out, that would, unless permitted by federal law, may be discriminatory. Those types of issues, I'll eventually get to to the programming we're talking about. But think of things like local preferences, preferences in contracting for minority-owned businesses, preferences for female-owned businesses in contracting at a federal level, veteran-owned preferences. There are a lot of statutory preferences that that allow, given the circumstances, differential treatment. Okay. Now, that said, the the same holds true for the content of this M O U, which is language, training and preservation for members of federally recognized tribes. And there are several federal laws that 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 authorize this. I'll cite them. There that provides preferences for American Indian students. And that's, I use American Indian because that's often used in in the statutes, Native American, et cetera. In federal law, you have the Native American Languages Act of nineteen ninety, Public Law one oh one dash four seven seven, which gives priority to native students in programming. Coupled with another federal act called the Indian Preference Act, they give preferences to student members of federally recognized tribes. You also have other laws that come into play, such as the Indian Education Act of nineteen eighty-eight, the Indian Self-Determination and Education Assistance Act of nineteen seventy-five, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five, and the Impact Aid Laws of nineteen fifty. Within these laws, there are also federal grants for for Native American preservation and cultural preservation. And so there are federal funds that are dispersed very specifically for for Pueblos and tribes to preserve their culture and their language. So again, you have these federal authorizations for for this, with the rationale being in these laws recognizing that there have been historic historical barriers for Native American Pueblos and tribes and students and barriers, you know, historic barriers that taught the education due to systemic cultural displacement and and inadequate funding within Pueblos and tribes for for education. So that's quick summary of the federal recognition of programs such as this, funding towards programs such as this. I do not know the origins of the funding. You know, that's that that would be like the tribe asking us what funding we use for for other things. They have their own obligations to ensure that they comply with the law, their own obligations in their federal grant reporting. And just as they should assume that we're appropriately using our war funding, I will give that deference to them that they're using theirs. Whether it's tribal funding or federal funding pursuant to what I've cited on the federal level, there's there's that authority. Now, let's couple it with New Mexico statute. There's also the New Mexico Indian Education Act at twenty-two, twenty-three, eight, one and following. But in twenty-two, twenty-three, eight, two, there in the New Mexico Indian Education Act, there are provisions for ensuring the maintenance of native language for native students, providing for educational systems that positively affect Native American students. And through this act, the Pueblo and Tribal Liaisons, Education Liaisons, have direct relationship with N M P E D. And that attaches to some of these things in the M O U, such as how these students will get recognized credit through N M P E D towards graduation.
Thank you.
I will also say I only sound this smart because we have a really good attorney on staff who formerly worked with the B I A and and knows her stuff with 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 what's called Indian law. But I do, I do appreciate the questions. And I think on 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 their face, the questions were very appropriate questions to ask and 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 to get responses to.
Mr. Tally, do you have a follow-up question or any concerns? Do you need clarity?
No, I've actually been educated tonight on on more federal law. I I still have concerns, but he's addressed at least, you know, with the concerns that I had. I don't have any follow-up.
Okay, Mr. Vickers, do you have any other questions or concerns?
Well, you you address the other the other issue is, what is the problem of allowing other students to participate in the class at the same time?
Mr. Vickers, just to follow up, Ms. Simoia actually addressed that a few minutes ago. The part of the language is also got some of the religious and other cultural beliefs. And it's to protect that within the Pueblo. That's why they don't.
Thank you. And that's that's consistent with what my answer was going to be. I do not wish to speak on behalf Isleta Pueblo or any other Pueblos that that and their practices in preservation of of their language. But this is very consistent with with Pueblos being very protective of their language as it relates to their traditions, cultures, faith, religious practices, et cetera. This isn't the first time that I have dealt with with a Native American Pueblo or tribe who is very protective of their language and their language traditions.
Are there any other questions for our attorney? Mrs. Simoia, were you satisfied with the responses?
Absolutely. I I, understanding the the cultural preservation and the sacredness of the language and having many friends on the Isleta Pueblo, I was aware that this is not a language that is taught to non-Isleta and non-native students. So I just wanted to hear from our attorney as to passing this M O U or acceptance of this M O U, if there was going to be any kind of legal repercussions. Per your research in law, it sounds like there are protections in there to protect the ability for us to offer this to our students.
As as a school board, I think you you have an obligation to do your due diligence. And again, I'll reinforce that these were very important questions and an important discussion to have tonight.
Is there any other discussion? Thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate it. Please drive safely. You know, stop for company frequently.
Yes.
Yes, all of those wonderful things.
I will do my my best to be embedded in an hour.
I will call for the vote now, please. Mr. Vickers, how do you vote? Mr. Bennett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Tally, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote. Yes, motion passes five zero. We are now on to item E, which will be the Acting Superintendent of Schools Report. So at this point in time, I will turn this over to Mrs. Chavis.
Thank you, Dr. Rosowski. I would like to have our student representative, Michaelie Burt, talk to us about Los Lounas High School. The podium is yours.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Los Lounas Schools Board of Education and Acting Superintendent Chavis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about Los Lounas High School. L L H S exists to inspire, empower and educate all students to higher levels of learning. Every student matters. Every moment counts. For our fall sports, we had a lot of success this year where our football team went all the way to the quarterfinals and finished with a winning record of eight and three. Our Tigerettes have supported every single sport and they are also in their own competitions. They just got second in one of their competitions and in their other competition, they had their top four soloists were all part of our Tigerette team. Ray Coleman took over the boys' and girls' golf program. And they have moved their practice location to U N M. So they they are really happy about that to have a really good golf course. And they began their spring, they began their spring season on February sixteenth. Volleyball made it all the way to the semifinals and they finished their season with a winning record of seventeen and eight. Our girls' soccer team ended with a record of twelve and five, and our boys' team ended with a record of one seventeen. Our cross-country boys were district champs and they got sixth overall at state. And then our cross-country girls were district runner-ups and got fifteenth overall in state, which is really good. For our winter sports, our wrestling team just held their first home tournament. And that was this past weekend and they had a great turnout and all of our wrestlers placed really well. Girls' basketball is currently five and one and they will play again this Friday away at Hobbs. And our boys are currently two and four with the new head coach of Pablo Gabeldon. And their next game is on December twenty-seventh at Pierre de Vista. One a good, in addition to Los Lounas High School's classes is the Calculus Two program, which is the first time that this has happened at the high school. And there are eight kids enrolled, including myself, and we were all preparing to take the A P B C calculus test at the end of the year. Lending a paw is a service learning club that Los Lounas High School started about three years ago. And this year, they have reopened the thrift store and they have opened a hygiene and food pantry for open to the public and also to the Los Lounas High School students during lunches and then before and after school. They have also, they create capstone projects as a serving service learning class. And they partnered up with the boys' basketball team and the Valencia County Animal Shelter. And they choose a dog for every game to be to sponsor the game. And that dog is advertised to be adopted at the game. And then there's also a business that sponsors the game and provides money to go towards scholarships for the service learning kids. They also donated over twenty turkeys this year to twenty different families in need, which is more than we've donated in the past. So that was really good. For homecoming, that was a really big success this year. The theme was At Last I See the Light, inspired by Disney's Tangled. And we had over six hundred and fifty students attend the dance. We also brought back the Powderpuff Game, which is the first time it's been back since COVID. And every class had a team and participated. Student Council is submitting their application for the N M A S C on January second. And they're going to host the twenty twenty-six state conference. They're also working on a toilet paper drive for Joy Junction. At our our classes are each competing to get as much toilet paper as possible to make a toilet paper sculpture. And the winning class gets a pizza party, I think it is. Winners will be announced this week. My class is going to win. And all this toilet paper will be donated to Joy Junction when we're done. And then, lastly, I just want to recognize one of one of our members that we lost this past October. Sergio Aldez. The Los Lounas community all came together and has raised over thirteen thousand dollars to give to his family so they can go back to Mexico and have a beautiful service for him. And then the boys' and girls' soccer team all put together, did her basket to his family for the holidays. And then some students at the high school made a memorial at his painted parking spot that we all did at the beginning of the year. And many students still visit that today. And then, lastly, the Los Lounas High School Administration, Counseling Department and teachers have all been extremely supportive for all students. And will continue to be supportive throughout the year. Thank you again for allowing me to speak to you about Los Lounas High School.
Nicely done. Take a breath a moment before we pound you with. Does anybody out there need tissues? Because we have plenty up here.
Thank you.
Mr. Vickers, do you have any questions for our student?
No, I can tell she's an athlete because so I was beside all the teams. And all of that, so it was very good report, sounded pretty good from across the board. Here's the golf team. Do you know how they get to practice? Are they on their own or is it possible to take someone?
They're all expected to get there on their own, but I know that the coach, like if there is a kid that has a problem getting to U N M, that the coach finds ways for them to get to practice, including some students. That the coach finds ways for them to get to practice, including some students carpool with each other.
Thank you very much for your report. You sound quite ambitious. With all the things you want to do and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett.
Noah, thank you. It was great reporting and congratulations getting to Datham State and I wish you the best there. And thank you for all you're doing within your community at the high school and outside the high school. Really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Tally.
Just a couple of things. Were you on the Powderpuff football team?
No, I couldn't go because I was at the Aztec tournament for soccer.
Priorities, right?
Yeah.
So I'm on a committee, you said you're taking the calculus two?
Yeah, yes, I am.
That's, that's awesome. And that's actually, I think, great that the school is is offering that. I think it should be an integral part of everybody's.
You've had your one pun for the.
And with that, I won't punish you anymore.
Oh my, I'm trying to recover from that.
Absolutely. Ms. Burt, thank you for your community involvement and incredible report as a matter of fact. Loved hearing more about the lending a paw. I get to see it, actually. A lot of what you do is posted through the news bulletin, so I appreciate you guys getting the word out there on what they do. Are you, are you aware of, you said the hygiene store is open, are you aware if we can drop off things for that?
I believe you can. You just have to contact Jessica Baldonado or Ms. Atkins at a number first thing. But both of them will, can give you more information about that.
Fantastic. You guys are doing so much for the community. And then finally, I wanted to give you an opportunity. I think you had some pens in the audience. Would you like to introduce your parents? I've always seen him on the sidelines of the soccer.
These are mine. I'm so grateful they're here. My mom is Christie Burt. She works at Sundance Elementary as a fourth grade teacher. And then my dad is Brett Burt and he's a principal at Boland High School.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
What is your favorite theorem in AP Calc?
Oh my.
Oh my gosh. Well, I love the chain rule.
Isn't that fun?
Yes, the chain rule makes my life so much easier.
Yep, that's probably.
I would agree with that. Do you know what the chain rule is?
Everyone will be Googling that tonight.
Yeah, that's a fun one. And you're prepping for the AP exam. I I want to echo what Tally said. I am thrilled we have eight students in AP Calculus or Calc two. I noticed in your bio that you talk about volunteering as an assistant instructor at horse and around.
Yes.
What is that experience like?
It's really, it's incredible to be able to be there and watch these. It ranges from little kids, like there was a kid I worked with, he's six years old, all the way up to this really sweet lady, I'm not allowed to say her age, she's twenty in her heart. Just to see them be so excited to get, to get there and be with the horses and be able to ride around and have people to talk to and.
To me have really gentle horses, so if we did a board retreat there, we'd have enough people to get us all on a horse and.
Yeah.
There should learn how to bond on a horse. You have been amazing and you've been remarkable. And it was a very, very nice report. Thank you very much for all you're doing up there. And I think I probably want to clarify, you're looking for full toilet paper rolls, not just the roll.
Not just the roll.
The way it's written here is toilet paper rolls, so I'm thinking you're probably wanting all. Feel free to bring your toilet paper to Losunis High School. Mr. Tiger, are you prepared? You are prepared. Thank you very much, Taylor. Just breaking off sorts of protocols tonight. The wall still is good. The agenda sixteen times.
She's a total battlefield, wow.
Bailey?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michaelie. And you will have to teach me that theorem because I did not take calculus. I taught first grade for that reason, so thank you. And the Burt family, if you would like to leave, you can leave or you can remain here for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your child with us. She is an absolute delight.
I would like to welcome Miss Sandy Tracek to discuss our budget finance report.
Well, it was in drop off.
You absolutely, well, we're setting up a couple of things over here. We need, have a couple of people who need a small break. So we are going to break at six fifty-three PM. We're back in three minutes tops.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Ready to go. Mrs. Wolf, Mrs. Chavis, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
I'm gonna call the meeting back into session at seven fifty, six fifty-eight PM.
Okay, Madam President, members of the Board, Acting Superintendent Chavis. I have the reports for the budget. So these are meant to kind of show you where we have budgeted and where kind of we are at today. These reports, the numbers were pulled as of December thirteenth. And you can see the first column, well, what we have are the, all the funds that we have, the description of the fund. The next column is the authority that the state has allowed us to use on our budget. The next column is what we have either spent or encumbered with either a purchase order or a contract on an employee. And the balance remaining and the percentage remaining. And when you look at this month for the operational, the largest fund that we have. We are at twenty-five percent remaining. But to try to give an idea of where we, last month, we were at twenty-six. So it's kind of a slower moving pace because the majority of those expenses, the largest amount of expenses that we have in operational are the employee expenses and those are the contracts that are already encumbered. And then it goes through all the different funds. And then at, towards the bottom, it does sub total where we are at. In on that line that says grand total. It is all of the funds that we have added together, what, all the funds that we have spent, the remaining. And we are at thirty-four percent remaining. And just also to give you, I put the prior month, we were at thirty-five percent in total. So to give you an idea of how how this moves. The next line I have is the, just the operational budgeted revenue. And I if you recall, last month, we were at fifty percent remaining. This month, we are at fifty. And I know that that seems a little bit scary when you look at expenses are only at the twenty-five percent. And then you see the revenue only at fifty percent. But like I mentioned in the expenses, we are showing you things that are, many expenses are already out to June thirtieth. Whereas when it comes to the revenue, we are only recognizing revenue that's been received in our bank. The next report kind of gives you a detail. I know that Dr. Osowski, you were a little bit concerned about that. Number seemed pretty big to have a fifty-eight percent last month remaining in revenue. Let's switch to the other one. So what I did was I detailed the different types of revenue that we budgeted for operational. So there is a description of the different types. Then one column is what I did budget for the, and that what is what gives us the budget authorities. So that is what we have budgeted for revenue. And the amount that we have received so far in the bank. And the amount that is remaining that we should expect to receive if I budgeted correctly. It gives a percentage and then it kind of, the, I believe it's G over in that column. Kind of gives an idea of why some of these, some of these have larger percentages than others. The ad valorem, you're looking at the property taxes. That will, that one is is not just a revenue that comes in about the same amount each month. We are looking at when it, because in November, we're starting to see property taxes come in. We're gonna see a lot more. It'll come when, when next month, when the December, it's always a month behind. When December hits, there'll be a spike in that month. And then you'll also see a large spike in June. So kind of when you think about the property taxes, when you pay, you pay in November or December, May and June. So that is why that number can still be high because we have not seen the big spikes, spike months yet. The next one, actually, the interest, we have received more interest than I budgeted for that, so that's a, a good thing. And the next one, the tower fees, those are, those are on target. And that is something that will come in monthly. The next one is the S E G. So that is the largest amount of revenue that we receive. It makes up the largest component of our operational revenue. And you can see we're at fifty percent. And that is because of the amount when we budgeted, it was a calculation. And as long as we produce the type of calculation that we figured out in the beginning. We receive one twelfth of that amount. So the reason why we're at fifty percent is because this has been posted up to December. We have received our December S E G already. And so we have received half of our revenue. It's, so we received six months, the next six months we'll receive. So we're right on target. The only thing that could change that is if the calculation of what we, what we budgeted, if things would change quite a bit. And that would be, let's say, we overestimated the amount of students that we're gonna have or something like that. But judging on our fortieth day, it appears that we will be fine. We should receive all of that revenue, if not more. And then there are the indirect cost. That number is, that percentage to remain is still high and that is because we post. We only calculate the indirect cost every quarter. And so we have not, we have only done one quarter so far. We will, doing the second quarter, so next month, you should see that percentage get better. Because we will, and at the end of December's, we will be first for the indirect cost. All in all, since the largest component of that is the S E G, it puts our calculation at fifty percent left. Which is, we're at, we are at about half the year at this point. So I hope that makes you feel a little bit more comfortable when you look at the small number on remaining for expenses allowed in the budget. The difference of the revenue being a larger number.
Think I was really more concerned that we would have to do bake sales and I didn't want to. Tracek, thank you very much. And you have any questions? Mr. Vickers, questions? Mr. Bennett? Mr. Tally?
Just a couple of clarifications, people transportation, that deficit that is always there because operational is gonna pick that up.
Right.
And is that the same thing with?
CYFD.
The CYFD?
Child Burt.
Okay. And then the next question, is there any? Do you know if there's any talk of raising the per unit value at the beginning of the year?
I have not heard anything. I, I would anticipate they would. I don't know that they did, if you recall in the beginning before they had bumped it up. So I would think if they did, it wouldn't be a large increase. I, I'm certainly not anticipating a decrease because that can happen. That is always a concern.
Thank you.
Mrs. Simoia?
No questions, thank you.
I have a couple. So we have about six items where we're sitting at eighty percent or higher remaining. I mean, I'm getting used to the numbers going down and I, and I'm feeling more comfortable, but we, what is it with these six that are?
Typically, the ones with the higher percentages are funds that aren't paying for salaries. So they're going to be something that wouldn't have contracts in there that would bring it down all the way up to the end of the year. Or it may have salaries, but they're not on a contract salary. So they might be paying like stipends or something quarterly, or I mean, you know, semi annually. So some of those will do that. And sometimes some of these are reserved for certain, certain. So it kind of depends on the fund. Like, for example, the local operational revenues, that is kind of something I am kind of holding off on. For the, that's a fund I've been using for buying the classroom supplies for students. So we will probably be, we purchased last year at the end of the year, we purchased for the beginning of the year. And then we will do, be doing like a mid-year check-in. So that will probably happen in January. And then, then again, hopefully at the end of the year, I will be purchasing, hopefully we'll be able to afford buying the classroom supplies again. And so we will be able to purchase next year's supplies. So that would be at towards the end of the year. So it's kind of, like I said, it depends on the fund. Or it also could depend on the timing of when we receive that fund and maybe a fund that we have received recently and haven't had the chance to spend it yet. There's all kinds of different scenarios that would cause that.
Thank you, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. I would like to welcome Mrs. McBen to discuss our current construction updates. And there, oh, Ms. Tracy, do we not have an update for the audit? I apologize.
I'm just going to call you back up.
Yeah. Present Members of the Board, Acting Superintendent. No, no change since last month. The audit was sent to the state auditor on time and we are waiting for that audit to be completed. Our audit committee has met and we will in the future be meeting to talk about the, you know, what will happen for the future audits. But we will not need to meet with our auditors on, on a monthly basis at this point when we're not in audit season. So we are going to, I've canceled the next, the next audit committee meeting as we will take a little break from it to give everyone a break. Right?
Thank you.
And questions on that?
No, 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 thank you. Then for me. Audit went on time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Mrs. McBen, now we're ready, thank you.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Acting Superintendent Chavis, thank you for allowing this opportunity to let you know some of the progress we've been making. So kind of the one obvious one today was our parking lot here, just want to acknowledge that. I hope you all got in smoothly, that it was a smoother drive for you here at Central Office. So that will be wrapping up towards the end of the week, beginning of next week with the front of the building getting finished and some additional striping and signage put up on the site. As well, we have ongoing work on our West Side Transportation Project, which is a bus canopy that is going up over there. They've poured all the concrete foundation columns and still arrived this week. So it'll start, we'll start seeing the erection of that structure happening in the coming days. We also have started installation of a pre-K canopy at Tillman Elementary, which will also be done for the students' return for Christmas break. And then an upcoming project that we've been working with some of our in-house maintenance, as well as outsourcing some of the work with a vendor, is adding additional parking lot at Sundance Elementary. And so a lot of people say, where is this parking going to be? In the middle of the drive loop, there's a big open area that is just had some random growing trees in it. We're removing those small shrubs and going to be grading out that area, adding some crusher fines, installing and dry a curb cut so that way we can use for after events or the other things where they need additional parking in the center of that loop. So we're not all hogging up the roadways anymore. So hopefully it'll bring some much needed help for the school. And then if we go to the next slide, just some progress pictures of Peralta Elementary. To the left is a side that no one really gets to see because it's facing the east of the property. But along there, it will be entrance into the cafeteria and outdoor courtyard and the gymnasium, which stucco is all happening on that side. And to the right is a picture of the front entrance. So that will be the new entrance of Peralta Elementary, once it is completed. And we are looking to see about scheduling a site visit for you all. And where the contractor was hoping the end of January, the last two weeks of January, they'll have a lot of things cleaned up and wrapped up for you guys to be able to see. So just let me know when you're available and we can schedule those dates. Next slide. Another project that's been ongoing and we're starting to kind of see the structures come up is the Los Inus High School Stadium's improvements. So you see the Tiger Den entrance, that'll be the new main entrance to the stadium. We just received color selections from a group at Los Inus High School for the painting of that structure, enhance those claw marks a little more and make it a little more vibrant and school spirit. You're also looking at some sidewalks that are completed, as well as the wrought iron fencing. And on the bottom picture is retaining wall that needed to go in in order for us to start construction on the building. So that is starting to come together with all the underground work finally resolved and completed. The next slide is a much appreciation that our maintenance crews wanted to extend a thank you for allowing us to purchase our own Bobcat and it's been put to use. This is improvements to landscaping areas at Tillman Elementary, areas where we had a rough time growing anything, we've been able to clear out spaces, adding different aggregates and rocks in there. We've also, will be working with Valencia High School students in the welding shop to create some welding structures that we can put in this kind of zero escaped area to add some color and fun for the elementary schools. Thank you for the equipment, it was much appreciated. Another project that we have been working on with our district electricians is putting up school zone lights in areas where we didn't have school zones. And so these were provided for us from the security department, we're able to order these and our electricians were able to add them. Their solar panel, have solar panels. So they were pretty convenient for us to put in areas without having to do major electrical work. And we do have some other sites that will be adding those as well. And then lastly are some HVAC and heating units that we've been able to update at sites. One of these units is a heater at Peralta, a combo unit, a heating and cooling unit at Los Inus Middle School, and then a heating unit at the Blue Gym. And so we've been able to make progress. We're steadily just going through and replacing units as needed and identifying ones that are aging out as we continue to make updates on our site. And with that, I stand for any questions?
Thank you very much. I always appreciate that you bring us nice vibrant pictures and I appreciate that you include our employees in there. Mr. Bickers, any questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Bennett?
I just have a question, that new parking lot, is that going to affect any of the kids walking or drop off pickup?
No, it's primarily going to be used for after our events when they have after our programs or parent nights so that we can have additional parking.
Mr. Tally?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Simoia?
Just a quick question, Tiffany. How is the, how are the heating at all of our buildings? Because I know sometimes during the Christmas break, we turn the heating down, then comes, they come back into classroom and we have issues. Is there going to be?
Now, we've, we've tackled a lot of those. We had more cooling issues this year with a lot of the heat that we had this summer. With heating, I think we're up and running primarily at most sites. We do have a P M I crew that goes repetitive. They have preventative maintenance that they do throughout the year at all our sites where they're checking our units, replacing filters and keeping those up to date. We currently have scheduled a vendor to come out and look at some units at Valencia High School and the gymnasium. We're having some issues with thermostats and heating triggering. So we are working on that site. But other than that, I have not heard of any other issues that we've addressed. Yeah, so those are, that's what we have going on at the moment.
Fantastic, thanks for the update.
I have just one question for the speed limit signs that we've put in the solar paneling, how did we pay for those?
I would have to direct that to the security department.
Thank you very much, thank you for the presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. McBen. I would like to invite Mr. Andrew Seis to the podium to discuss our current vacancies.
Hello, good evening, my name's Andrew Seis, Assistant Superintendent. Madam President, Members of the Los Inus School Board of Education, Acting Superintendent Chavis, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening about our vacancies in our school districts. What we got here? Just a quick rundown of what brings us here this evening. On the evening of November nineteenth, it was requested that a report on vacancy be reported either in a school board meeting or at a workshop. On twelve-six, the decision was made that the report shall be on certified vacancies. So I'm speaking to certified vacancies this morning. As of this evening, we have eighteen certified positions vacant in the district. To kind of put things into perspective, however, as of the same date this evening, we have six hundred and sixty-seven certified positions that are filled with current employees. We have a total of thirteen hundred and twenty-three employees as reported in Eye Visions, which is our employee information system platform that we use. To kind of give you an idea what those vacancies look like over the span of this school year, I would love to do that. That's okay. I believe you have the report there as we get back to that page. But looking back, every month, we kind of monitor our openings, both certified and classified, by taking a peek at what's needed. If you can look in June, we have, we had of twenty-four, we had a need for twenty-nine certified employees. As we got closer to the school year beginning, we got to twenty-four. First day of school, we're looking at fourteen. Now that was various between teachers and ancillary folks, including counselors. And then as the year progresses, typically in October, we don't like to mention October because that's typically a bad month for different things. But that's typically in my tenure, when we start to lose a few folks before the end of the semester. So this trend you see is pretty typical for what I see on an annual basis. So.
Mr. Seis? Yes. Just sorry, do you know what contributes to that?
Uh, I, I have personal theories perhaps, but I, I believe I, I, I don't know what it is exactly, but.
Is that increase, are there a lot of maybe new teachers that are leaving, maybe teaching wasn't for them, or is that?
It, it's hard to pinpoint that. I, I wouldn't go, I think that's a stretch because at the same time, you've got educators retiring in December. So it just seems to be a trend that's out there. I don't pay much attention to it actually because we know we need to refill those positions as quickly as possible. So I don't, I, I don't want to succumb to paralysis by analysis so much on that one. We just need to know, we need to get some fresh players out on, on the field. So that, that's kind of how I look at it. Yes, sir. That breakdown of those eighteen folks is as follows. This is the beginning of our breakdown. So you're looking at six general ed teachers, seven special ed teachers and where we need them, and then our school counselor that remains to be hunted down. So I will say we do have a recommendation from Peralta Elementary. So we're hoping that we get that counselor position filled because that's looking at the group of what we got going on, that would be a priority for, for my office to get that filled, along with the special ed positions. And I, I would, I will say, I, I kind of feel like the student that turned in his homework just a little bit too early last week. The general ed teacher should actually read seven, so we actually have nineteen. So I did leave out unintentionally Valencia Elementary. We actually have an opening there for a grade school teacher. So next slide, please. Continued breakdown of those vacancies, we're looking for an inclusion support coach at Los Inus Middle, registered school nurse, social worker, which I believe we've got a lead on today. So that one should no longer be up there here in about forty-eight hours, hopefully. And then we need, continue to need a speech language pathologist within the district as well.
Question?
Yes.
Is this include administrators?
Yes, sir.
So there are no administrative vacancies?
Correct. So cert, yeah, certified, I, just for clarification, I've included anywhere from, anything that would include a license outside of paraprofession. So administrator, ancillary, teacher, counselor. So, yeah, I, I know it looks like we have a lot of openings, but I can stand up here today and tell you, this is the first year that both of our high schools, our comprehensive high schools are fully staffed at the same time. So, you know, take what you can get. But I can tell you, four years ago, we couldn't find a P E teacher and we had two openings. So it's just kind of cyclical in some ways. And, yeah, we just try our best to, to do what we can as far as filling.
One other question. Speech language pathologists. In the past, we just had contractors doing that work. We're now, they're on payroll now.
In, in my time there, sir, we've actually had a combination of both, both of our employees and contractors. So we, we are always looking to have our own employees. But in those cases where we cannot fill them by recruitment, we do rely on the services for contract workers, sometimes in the area of nurses as well. Mostly in the ancillary field. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Got it. Next slide, please. In our continued recruitment and relationships with our local universities, we have these upcoming events in the springtime. We are hoping to or actually will participate in the following there with universities. The University of New Mexico is probably our, our bread and butter, that's right there close. We're in the metro, we're considered the metro. So we, we do have our best luck at, at U N M. We also have our best luck at holding our own educator fair. So that came into play probably twenty eighteen or so, we started hosting our own. We got the idea at a national convention, so we brought that home. And since then, we've had some pretty good success in attracting folks to come to our Teacher Resource Center. And that's also an opportunity to bring back most of our short-term employees at the same time.
Mr. Seis, in our homegrown, we got, we have anybody that looks like they might be licensed by the end of this school year to start working next school year?
Yes, sir. So if you turn to the next slide, please. So these programs that are mentioned here, I, I will set space on that, Mr. Bennett, thank you. So these programs that we participate in are educator fellows, teacher residents, and then our, I guess if you would say, quote, regular student teachers and interns, unquote. We, the numbers that coincide there are the, the number of folks that we have kind of in the bullpen, getting ready to be brought forth into jobs, hopefully. brought forth into, uh, jobs hopefully. So you see there, uh, teacher residents. Between teacher residents and educator fellows now in December, we're actually for January twenty-sixth, we're actually bringing on six new teachers, uh, through this through these various programs that were, uh, affiliated with local universities and with the state of New Mexico with. So, yeah, it's been, the grow your own programs have been very successful for us. And this, uh, on the far right, you see the student teachers. Those would be folks that are going the traditional, like from a paraprofessional, uh, grow your own program outside of the other two that are mentioned, uh, that are kind of chipping away at their education as they're working as a paraprofessional. So those uh, individuals are on the radar and, uh, we've got them on the draft list, uh, draft and follow list. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Seis, um, student teachers, uh, their requirement is, uh, a full year.
We found it, it depends on the university or the program they're going through. Typically, it's a three semester, uh, program. So it's, uh, observing, observing, second semester would be observing plus delivery of instruction. Third semester would be taking over the classroom typically.
And then the short explanation of what is the difference between a fellow and a resident?
Okay, so educator fellows, we began, I believe, four years ago, three, three years ago, uh, we put in an application through the state for educator fellows. Those are folks that are in various stages of their, um, schooling to become an educator. So that's part of the, uh, uh, requirement is they have to go into a field in education, preferably teaching. Those folks can be first year, second year. It's a two-year block or grant. That's, uh, so we just started a second year, uh, second uh, round of grant. So our first educator fellows that we brought on, we were lucky enough to have them in their second year or so, third year, kind of a mix of having seventy to eighty hours of, of credit hours. Those initial ed fellows we brought on are now in the classroom teaching. So they're, uh, teachers of record at this point. They've gone through their program. Uh, what educator fellows provides is an opportunity to start your career early. So we bring them on as, on the paraprofessional salary schedule. But they're essentially a classroom assistant, another hand, uh, another adult in the classroom where they're assigned. And, uh, they're working with kids. It's like on-the-job training to become a teacher. And, uh, we provide, uh, just like any other full-time employee, benefit package, uh, tuition reimbursement. Uh, they start their career earlier. As I mentioned earlier, they're paying into ERB. So now the thirty-year requirement to retire, if you can, uh, begin your year, uh, your career early, you're now, let's say you're an ed fellow for two years, you now have twenty-eight years to teach instead of the thirty. So, uh, get some kind of in the system early. Uh, teacher residents, we have, we're working with, uh, three main universities, uh, Highlands, New Mexico Highlands, Western New Mexico and UNM, uh, mainly for the educator, I'm sorry, the teacher resident program. That is a program that's funded outside of, uh, the district. So the university is actually taking these folks and paying them thirty-five thousand dollars a year to be a teacher resident, just like any other, uh, many other professions, uh, doctors, veterinarians, they go through some type of residency. The notion behind this program is to become a professional, you gotta kind of see someone and, uh, work with a professional in that field. Same idea or notion in this regard. They get a year-long student teaching experience paid, uh, through the, through the university. So the thing with that is, uh, they're not offered benefits and, uh, they're not earning leave and those kinds of things as employees. But they're getting, uh, compensated through the university.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's the difference. And in those, uh, I just need to say in the student teachers and the interns, we, uh, currently have five of the eight, five are regular, if you will, uh, student teachers that are becoming teachers. We have one intern, uh, performing their ed leadership, the internship for ed leadership program, one ed diagnostician and one behavior analyst. So just kind of give you a breakdown on the, the right-hand side there. I do have, I, I know you chose to focus on certified openings. I'm just gonna kind of give you some quick, uh, math on classified openings. We have fourteen current classified openings, uh, within the district. So a quick breakdown, we've got four bus drivers, two cafeteria helpers, one mechanic, uh, two school resource officer positions and five special education assistant positions. So that's just a quick rundown on the classified side.
Thanks.
That is all I have. Prepare. I'm, I'm ready to answer any, any further questions.
Mr. Vickers, do you have any other questions?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Got it.
Mrs. Simaya?
No, thank you. Thank you. Great report. It's a very nice report. Thank you. Look forward to hearing this more frequently.
So I noticed it looks like about a two-point-eight percent vacancy rate. And did you talk, is this one of our lowest?
I called it a two-point-seven, but you do the ten. But actually entirely, it's actually floating around a two-point, and that's usually, uh, from talking to other school districts, it's usually floating around that two percent.
Okay.
But I don't like to look at it that way. I like to look at it as a ninety-eight percent fill rate. So.
Really pretty tremendous. I just did my math with a red pen. So just putting that out there about the temp. Just, just want to put that out. So Bloody October, is that something that we should, um, investigate a little when staff leave that we?
Oktoberfest or something?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we could dig a little deeper, uh, you know, look for a root cause. I, I don't, I don't know if you'll find one. You probably find five to six, uh, various reasons why they're leaving. So uh, like I said, I, I try not to, uh, personally focus on, 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 uh, you know, their decisions to leave. Uh, we try to be in our school district more, uh, preemptive and preventive. I know we have an outstanding mentor program, uh, for our teachers. We're actually looking at spreading that across to all of our employees and offering certain, uh, things second semester that we wouldn't normally offer. I'm, I'm not going to give you all of the secrets at this point, but we're, we're looking at, uh, changing in how we do business just a little bit to make a transition to becoming a Los Unus school's employee just that much better for folks. So we're, we're hoping to, uh, retain individuals that we've been, uh, impressed with enough to where we've recommended them. We, we would want to keep those people.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I noticed on the breakdown of vacancies, we had eighteen and then we have counted for fifteen. Not, not that it's a huge difference.
I, I believe I did my math correctly, but, um.
Oh, it could be, is it on the next page? Okay.
Yeah.
Steak.
I, I didn't take checkers too, but I, I can. No, the only chain I wear is around the neck.
I have to tell you, um, when we were at this latest training, uh, I sat in a session where, um, a person actually came up and made the point of telling me how much they appreciate working as a trainer, um, to provide some of the sessions in the admin program. I know that this wasn't specific to admin, but they were highly complimentary of working with you and your staff and on the sessions that we offered for those persons looking forward to going into admin. So kudos to you.
Thank you.
Um, they sought me out with a little badge. So I thought that that was pretty telling when they found me in the back of the room, almost asleep, not really, but anyway, to let me know how, how enjoyable it is to work with junior department.
So much. Like I said, we, we're hoping to, I, I believe, uh, we, we would be doing our employees a disservice if we didn't attempt to improve what we do. So I, I think we have some surprises coming up in the spring that, uh, will address some of these concerns of, on staff leaving.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Seis. As I wrap up my report, we would like to extend our sincere condolences to the Gueda family, our thoughts and prayers with the family and the district community. Thank you also to our staff who provided exceptional support and comfort to our students and staff this month as they continue to grieve. The first week of December was challenging for our district and staff supported students and one another throughout the week. Our eighty-day count was the day we returned from Thanksgiving break. So that was unique to this year because we usually have a little bit longer, um, time before the holidays and Thanksgiving fell later in the calendar year. So we did come back to an eighty-day count. Our enrollment continues to increase. We did increase enrollment from last year's eighty-day count. We will continue to monitor those numbers, but it is moving in a positive direction. But we are very excited about that. This is our last week of the fall semester. Students will be on winter break from December third to January seventh. Students will return to school on January eighth. Staff will return on January sixth for professional development and also to prepare for the spring semester. There are many activities occurring this week. We would like to remind our students to make positive choices and end the semester on a positive note. We know the holidays bring out great excitement, but we have the rest of the week and we have learning to continue. Thank you to all the students and staff participating in community service projects during the holiday season. Last week, Century High School, Los Unus High School and Valencia High School were featured on New Mexico Living to showcase our service learning projects. We also had one of our teachers, Ms. Tiffany Cali Carney, receive a Pay It Forward reward from KOB Pay It Forward regarding her work at Century High School. Last week, Amperas Elementary, Los Unus Elementary, Los Unus Family School, Blommete Elementary and Valencia Elementary received their school banners for increasing their school designations to traditional. Congratulations to those school sites. And thank you to all who came out to celebrate their success. Our district report card is on our district website and was recently published in the news bulletin. And finally, and most importantly, I would like to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season and a very happy new year. And that concludes the report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mrs. Chavez? Mr. Vickers, any questions? Mr. Bennett? Mr. Tally?
Nope.
Mrs. Simaya?
No. Great job.
Um, just as a reminder, item E, the acting superintendent of schools reports and the subcomponents were all for informational, informational purposes only. No action is needed or warranted at this time. We are now on to item F, which is board commendations. Mr. Vickers?
I have one. Ms. Chavez mentioned the, uh, awards for those five schools. Uh, PED had a representative come down to present the banner, which is up in, it belongs to us and it's up in every one of those schools, highly visible. And, uh, I happened to be there and Susan Chavez was there and a couple of others, um, were there at each school site. It's, it's, we sort of made a little parade around the district. And the PED representative and, uh, Ms. Chavez does not know I'm going to say this. The PED representative pulled me aside and said, I'm so impressed that your superintendent took the time to go to each of these sites to congratulate each of these school administrations on, on their increase in achievement and their, they're going up in the report card. And so I just wanted to mention that, that she said, I don't see that. She says, I go all over the state doing this and I don't see that in other districts. Kudos to Ms. Chavez.
Thank you. Ms. Montana was also there to join us on that tour and it was great. We were excited to see students join us. And at Valencia Elementary, they had, I can't remember the acronym, maybe the RAP pack, but I don't remember what their acronym is for, but they, they welcomed us and they were very excited to see us. So congratulations to the five schools.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Vickers. Mr. Bennett?
Pretty much Ms. Chavez hit them all, especially the one that, that everyone terried was Ms. Carney's, uh, uh, pay it back. That was really sweet of her and that's really, uh, pretty much describes this district. I mean, that kind of heartfelt work going out, just not at the classroom, but my thought would be awesome. Really appreciate that.
Mr. Bennett reported being terried, which I think is outstanding. I liked hearing that. Mr. Tally? Okay. Mrs. Simaya?
Just a, a couple of, of statements. I would just wanted to express heartfelt thanks to the educators and to the staff, school bus drivers at this time of year, our SROs for always trying to do their best. I really appreciate that in light of the school shootings that have happened. It's so hard to get to this point of the year. The, the students are just ready to be done. It's amazing. They're done and then they can't wait to get back. So I just want to encourage all of our staff to take the time, enjoy your families, enjoy your holiday rest, recruit, and then, uh, get ready to hit it again for January twenty twenty-five. We're very proud of you. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I have a few that I'd like to make. I noticed that we had a couple of scholarships or at least that have been publicized. The Omega Psi Phi Scholarship to Isabella Ventropool for fifteen hundred dollars. Congratulations to her and Caitlin Johnston was one of our first scholarship recipients at the beginning of this, uh, fall semester. And I want to recognize her and I, um, would love to hear more about our scholarship recipients for our academicians as well. We hear a lot of great and fabulous reports on our sports. I'd like to see a little bit more on our academics coming up. Um, I too would like to commend the Los Unus High School Boys Basketball for their service learning project with the Valencia Animal Shelter. Um, fur babies are near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate that they take the extra time and show the compassion. Um, I did notice, um, from the social media sites, et cetera, the exceptional effort um, with the football team, Los Unus High School's football team and the lend-a-paw and the food boxes. Um, it was tremendous to see twenty turkeys out there on top of a box in a nice healthy food box going to some of our community members who may need them. And finally, we have mini band members who made the district honor bands, nineteen in the symphonic, um, three in wind symphony and three students in alternates. So we have wonderful things happening across our district at all sorts of levels. It's why we are starting to become known as a premier district from all the way around. And I appreciate absolutely everybody's interest and help with getting us there and working with students. That concludes item F. Again, this was for informational purposes. Only no action was warranted or needed at this time. We are now on to item J, the presentation of board policy. The first reading be zero nine zero zero, board organizational meeting. We have read through this. Because this is not an action item, I will stand for comments from the board. Um, as we go into, the next board meeting will be for our second reading. So, um, discussion from the board. Mr. Vickers, do you have any discussion on this particular proposed policy change?
One thing I'd like to mention about this policy that, uh, the original was from the Policy Service. And it, uh, stated that the board would re-signups on the first regular meeting in January. And I, it came to my attention that that leaves us, our first regular meeting in January is the twenty-first. That leaves us with three weeks with no board officer at all. And the superintendent and the board president are supposed to work together on the agenda for a regular meeting. There will be no president after January, uh, December thirty-first. So I would be interested to know how we're going to deal with that particular issue. And so the change, um, that I'm recommending is that it, that it would be as we used to do it, uh, first, uh, special meeting held on the first Tuesday in January. So you still have three days or however many days less than a week where we have no board officer, but at least that's taken care of. And also the issue, if we had had board members elected in November, we would be going three weeks, say there was three elected in November, we'd be going three weeks without a functional board. Because we only have two sworn in, sworn in members. So that's an important change that needs to happen is that it goes to the uh, first Tuesday of January.
So we definitely have to add that wording in here because you're absolutely right. This Policy Service is, again, we were.
Well, yeah, but it's in there in this copy you have.
Right.
Uh, it is corrected, so. We still have the issue this coming in January of having no more president till the twenty-first of January.
Mr. Vickers, where does it state in our board policy that the term of the seated board and the officers' terms on December thirty-first? I did, I couldn't find that in the language.
It is. Believe it's in this.
The, the existing language is all of whom shall hold office for one year or until their successors are elected. So one year would be January eighth or January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, one year.
I think the addition of unless or until their successor has been elected, that would leave them in until their successor. So that would take care of the first issue Mr. Vickers raised, that there wouldn't be anyone for the first part of the month. There would be however, on perhaps on an election year that might, people might think about differently where if one of them is out of office at December thirty-first, then that might leave us with some vacancies.
I definitely do see that we would need to, so just, just to clarify for the audience, again, a previous board adopted this, the Policy Service from the New Mexico School Boards Association. And as anybody who's been a participant in any of our meetings, we've struggled with our policies because we continually find these holes, these gaps. And so as we're going through them with a fine tooth comb and definitely using some sage advisement from those who've been here for a while or been on previous boards versus those who have fresh and new eyes. We're, we're seeing these, these glaring things. Our purpose is of course to rectify those holes and then to make the policy something that is reflective of the needs for this district. So I do think definitely that we need to add language in here that is specific to either general or regular elections, because we could have a board member elected on a regular election versus a general election. Uh, and that would definitely need to happen on the first Tuesday. So I think that we could definitely gussy that language up a little bit. But I do like the existing language, all of whom shall hold office for one year or until their successors are elected. But I think we need to clarify the language about either a general or a regular election. Because general is the presidential and the regular would be the off years. Correct? Is that the correct terminology? Do I have the correct terminology? Is there any other conversation on this for our first reading? Mr. Bennett, did you have any comments or?
No, I agree with Mr. Vickers on the, on the, the part that we need to first Tuesday of January to have that special meeting.
Is that for all years or for only after elections?
I think, I think all years.
All years.
Just make it easier.
Okay, Mr. Tally, any comments, suggestions, recommendations?
I think, I think we just, I think we do it the same for every year. Just make those clarifications and, and then we do it the same every year, so no question.
Okay. Mrs. Simoyah?
No, no other comments on it. I just wanted to go ahead and clarify that as well, so.
So I know that we had a conversation before about the language by motion and vote decides to reorganize sooner. So I don't know if we want to bring that back up for discussion or if we want to see the revisions for the second reading and have that conversation.
Well, you brought it up. Might as well have the conversation.
Sure. So there were some concerns raised at the last, I think it was a work session, because we have not had this on a board meeting. And if I looked at my notes correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there was concern with the decides to reorganize sooner, that that could be one of those situations where if the board came out of kilter and wasn't working well together, that you could have a reorganization and then two months later have another reorganization and then whatever X amount of time have another reorganization. Because it would just take three. So there was concern expressed that that language might be too broad. And it would not lend to consistency in the board. Did I capture that in my notes correctly?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wants to make a comment about that or how do we feel about that language?
So I, I do like the language of, of being able to reorganize sooner. I understand the concern and I don't know if you have any thoughts on how we might remediate that? Or how we can reconcile it too?
One thought that I have is if we have four one, and this is all hypothetical, please, please, nobody take this out of context whatsoever. But as you, when we get to have these opportunities to go into statewide training, you get to hear amazing stories and you get to have thoughts brought to you that you need to pontificate for your own district. And one of the sessions that I went to talked about how the board polices each other in terms of our conduct and our behavior. And one of the conversations that I participated in was if the decision is to reorganize, and this might be language we would want to add, because of the conduct of one of its members. So I will use me as a hypothetical example, please heavy on the hypothetical. Say I go rogue and go out and start committing all sorts of procurement violations where I commit to this vendor and I commit to that vendor on behalf of the district, which is not something that can happen with one board member. That we have a policy in place away from this policy that talks about how the board polices the conduct of its measure members. And so I can see that if the board decides to reorganize sooner based, uh, because of conduct issues of a board member. Because otherwise I can see the other complication being if you get a board that is not gelling well and there's factions, which adds to absolutely no benefit for students, staff or the community. Then depending on how you're polarized, you could honestly be reorganizing every month. If you have those kinds of factions, not that this district would under, have had any experience in that whatsoever. So I would maybe suggest decides to reorganize sooner. Um, and I can try some language and we can wordsmith it because of the conduct of a member, an officer of the board. I don't know.
And not, not just possibly the, the conduct of a member, maybe the, the will of a member that has different obligations or something they can't commit as much to, they may not want as that much time in that position, say President, Vice President, Secretary, or whatever.
So there's, there's multiple reasons why there might be need for reorganization. For instance, in Valen, one of the board members became the superintendent of the score of schools. And I'm not sure this was his idea, but he was removed from the presidency of that board.
It was his idea.
It was his idea. Okay. So, but there's a reason there that, okay, I can't be president and be a superintendent in a different district. So that's just an example, also what Mr. Bennett has raised. Is another example, I, I think the notion of leadership changing every month. A few medically it could happen, but I don't, I don't see that as happening. In the US House of Representatives, one member can call for a vote on the speaker. One member of the Republican, well, the majority can call for a vote. And so talk about a sort of a dysfunctional faction there. And it hasn't happened. So so I think it allows for that, those opt for the membership if they, if they so choose.
Is there any other discussion? These are all great points. Any other conversation or discussion?
By majority vote or do you believe this should be a four one vote? That this would be a discussion that I don't, that I would just put out there is, you know, because you can basically silence by a vote the, the voice of a member if they are going rogue on you.
No, in the majority vote, of course.
A majority vote.
But somebody could raise, make a motion.
Right. Are you requesting a, a majority vote or a four one vote? Because you can also change that. So in other words, it's pretty much a unanimous decision with the exception of the one member. Just things to think of.
Okay, that's an option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, this is for, and I just wanted to question or get a point of order really quick, because this is a consent item, it.
It was not consented.
It was not consented. It's just a question, presentation only? Thank you.
Yeah, just, yeah, presentation.
Fantastic.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for that. Is there anything else? It's a good hearty first reading, Mrs. Simoyah. Thank you very much. We're on to item K, which was also not consented. Discussion with possible action to pause the work plan to close RGE by the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Do I have a motion to pause the work plan to close RGE by the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year? So move. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Do we have any discussion? The motion on the floor is to pause the work plan to close RGE by the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Having no discussion, am I, am I, did I not look up, Mr. Vickers, did you have something to say? Apologize.
No, the, the action is optimal, so.
It is optional. Um, and I moved that to, I asked for a motion and I was given one.
Right, I understand that.
So any discussion?
So we have right now a plan to close RGE. There was no commitment that it would be closed by a certain date.
That is correct. The work plan was to, to work towards closing RGE by the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Has any work been done on that?
It's in progress. Mrs. Chavis, can you speak to that?
For the closure, is that the question? There is no, not been anywhere working towards the closure.
Almost seems like a, a moot point, right? I mean, we, we talked about closing it and then we had a bunch of other things happen over the, uh, the course of the last few months and nothing has happened on it. It almost seems like a moot point because we haven't.
But it's a dangling participle. Correct, Mr. Ricky? It's a dangling participle. So let's close that loop. I am going to call for the vote. The, remember the motion is to pause the work plan to close RGE by the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
I'm trying to get a grasp on the exact when it's called.
Pause. I thought that we had, when I looked through my notes, the, the work plan, the, the approved work plan to close RG was by the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seventh school year. Am I correct on that?
That's what I.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, because we were, we were, Mr. Tally and I were trying to push it further, but we knew, we kept getting feedback on the date, so we agreed on the twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Right.
And this would just pause that.
This would just. It just means right now to pause it.
So, so positive vote would be a pause on the plan, sort of a revisit, look it over, make it terminate.
Yes. Was that a yes?
I understand the.
Oh, okay. So, Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes, five zero. We are on to item M. Do business. Are there any requests for topics for upcoming board work sessions or board work meetings? I should say that for the January meeting, we have on the list. We have the second reading for the board plan. I think I've got the rest of it back in the bag. So we have quite a pretty good agenda right now planned. Do you have any, are there any other requests though? And I'll see if I can find my list here. It might be in my back things. Yes. Are there any other new requests?
Dr. Rosowski, I actually have a list here. As we are striving to be a premier district in the state and hopefully the country, I, I think a, a work session or some discussion about administrative and teacher accountability. How can we expect achievement of our students if we can't hold accountable those who are teaching and, and providing the administration? So I think we need to discuss that and perhaps at some point generate a policy in regard to accountability. Uh, has been brought up today with one of the public comments. I think we should have a work session or discussion at some point about safety of the schools and uh, perhaps what the, the job of the SRO is, what they're, what they're supposed to be doing as well as other things that were brought up by, by the lady in public comment. Also, I think it would behoove us to discuss the special education activities as well. Thought those were some good ideas.
Can you speak more, more of that?
Uh, what, what are we doing to make our, our special education students feel included in uh, things like field trips or how can we better serve them in that, in that manner? Is that clear or not clear that enough?
No, that's good. That's good.
I don't know what the feasibility of this one is, but perhaps bringing other languages to, uh, the district. Right now we have essentially Spanish. I think it'd be great if we had other opportunities for the students here. Uh, that may be with Apex Learning or, or some other method if we can't bring the proper resources here. A discussion on the fine arts. He goes to support that and what we can do to better, uh, support the fine arts, uh, more, perhaps more than just band. And then, uh, discussion on the educational coaches that we have, the different roles that they, that they provide. What their purpose is, is there a need for all of these coaches and, and kind of just a general discussion about that. And then the last one, this is something that was brought up at the, uh, NMSBA conference. And then the last one, this is something that was brought up at the uh, NMSBA conference. Um, because we provide online streaming and people can access the video and things like that live. There is also, uh. There are those that would like to contribute remotely and um, it may become required. That we provide that ability for those who are participating online to be able to contribute. Uh, we probably should look at that and what we can do in policy to aid them in that. And that one also, when I was a mere community member. I tried to comment remotely a couple of times and was denied the opportunity. So that one also was. Dear to, little near to my heart.
Near and dear.
That's right. So I don't know if that's a enough items. That's gonna probably fill up a number of.
That's a mere eight. That's only eight, Mr. Tally.
Well, there's twelve months, so I I got us two thirds of the way.
So, is there anybody else?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I I want to press on with with the uh. The SRL policy and and make sure that we.
That's on the.
Progress in getting a comprehensive policy.
That's on the January meeting. It was on the January meeting. Um, and let's see. Miss, did you have anything else? Okay, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, but there's a rule you take care of that.
Great. Mr. Tally, Mrs. Simoia.
I bet too. I'd like to address, uh, and again with the NMSBA training, we talked a little bit about the AI policies. I mean, individual classrooms, English Lit has things basically about plagiarism. But I think it's going to be going a little bit deeper, so I think we need to be looking into that a little bit. And start setting policies so that it's consistent throughout the district.
You want that a work session topic?
I think we should probably start with a work session topic on that.
Okay.
Um, the next thing I would love to do is a presentation is uh, have the. Los Llanes Schools liaison between the University of New Mexico Valencia campus, um, discuss two items with us. Number one. Um, student opportunities that we're working together. That maybe the community is unaware of. I'm familiar with several, but I'm not sure how good we do as an education. For the community on letting them know these programs exist. And then the other epitome is um, using that. Uh, two-year institution in our own backyard as possibly a. Teacher development kind of a programming and see what they have to offer, how we can work together with them so that we are. Kind of getting our own homegrown again there. And not necessarily in the educational classroom, but we can use them for other services as well. So those would be, those would be the two I missed.
So great. I'm not going to add more as we have a retreat coming. Uh, this information was for the purpose of gathering input. No action is needed or warranted at this time. We are now on to item O. The announcement of meetings. Am I correct on that?
Yep.
No, I'm sorry. And.
Yeah.
Item M. N, the announcement of meetings. This brings us to the announcement of meetings as allowed by the Open Meetings Act and the District Open Meetings Resolution. On occasion, a quorum of the board members attend the same function, including school and district celebrations and ceremonies. As well as sports functions, conferences, workshops, trainings and community events. Board members will refrain from discussing and or acting on Los Llanes Schools Board of Education issues in those settings. In addition, only official meetings are published and if other meetings are scheduled, they will be announced in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. With that being said, I would like to announce the following meetings. December nineteenth, twenty twenty four, Board Superintendent Retreat to be held at the UNM Workforce Training Center. Um, located at ten twenty Hunning Ranch East Loop in Los Llanes, New Mexico. We will begin that at eight o'clock and hopefully conclude by three thirty P M. A quorum will be in attendance. These items will be for discussion only. No decisions will be made. The next meeting will be on January fourteenth, twenty twenty five, the Finance Committee meeting, which will be held in the Central Office Conference Room. That will begin at three o'clock P M. Uh, January fourteenth, the Audit Committee meeting, or was that canceled, Mrs. Tracy? You're gonna cancel that? Okay, I will mark that off of here then. Um, we are looking at January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. It will be a board work session. We will begin that at four o'clock. P M and we will announce those topics.
Since five P M.
I know, but we had four o'clock was for the audit. So we'll. But since you canceled that, we can move that up. Will that be okay with both of you two for work?
We'll make it work.
We will make it work. Thank you very much. And that will be held in the Central Office Boardroom. And on January twenty first, twenty twenty five will be the regular board meeting. Held in the Central Office Boardroom and that will begin at six o'clock P M. On to item O. Closed executive session. Discussion regarding purchase of property specifically, discussion regarding possible land purchase. And discussion regarding transfer request of land from the state of New Mexico to Los Llanes Schools. This is pursuant to New Mexico statutes annotated nineteen seventy eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one H eight. I would stand for a motion to go into closed executive session, Mr. Bennett. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Um, you have to read the whole, you have to read the whole meeting to go into closing executive session. So discussion regarding purchase.
For the, for the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bennett, would you like to read the whole thing?
Yes, I moved it to for the discussion regarding purchase of property, specifically discussion regarding possible land purchase and discussion regarding transfer requests of the land from the state. To New Mexico to Los Llanes Schools, pursuant to Mexico's uh. Date, whatever, nineteen seventy eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one H eight.
And the second, Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Having no discussion, I will call for the vote, Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. Board is closed executive session at eight fifteen P M. Sorry? After. Okay. We'll be asking Mrs. Sandy Tracy to join us first thing. Yes.
Dr. South could be needed.
I'm sorry. Yes, and Mrs.
Mrs. Bigman?
Yeah.
You.
You're ready, Mrs. Wolf?
Absolutely.
I would stand for a motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Names? Oh, we need names of motion and second.
I've got that. Mr. Bennett made the motion. Mr. Tally seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, I will call for the vote. Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Seymour?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes 5:00 PM. We are back in regular session at 9:27 PM. We're on item P, report on closed executive session. As announced, the Los Angeles Schools Board of Education went into closed executive session at eight something time. Do you have the time, Mrs. Wolf? Eight fifteen PM. Thank you. As stated in the motion, the discussion in closed session was regarding purchase of property, specifically discussion regarding possible land purchase. Eight fifteen P M. Thank you. As stated in the motion, the discussion in closed session was regarding purchase of property, specifically discussion regarding possible land purchase, and discussion regarding transfer request of land from the state of New Mexico to Los Angeles Schools. This is pursuant to New Mexico statutes annotated nineteen seventy eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one H eight. I attest that no other topics were discussed than those listed in the motion, and no action was taken during closed executive session. I would stand for a motion regarding items Q.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have two separate motions. I want to address this in two different motions. Regarding the purchase of property, I would like to move to authorize Acting Superintendent Chavez or her designee and two members of the Board of Education to negotiate the details of the purchase of said property.
Second.
Mr. Ben- Mrs. Moya moved and Mr. Bennett seconded to authorize the negotiations of the purchase of said property, to authorize the Acting Superintendent or her designee and two members of the Board to negotiate the purchase of the property. Is there any discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Tally?
I would suggest for the the two board members that we pick someone who was on the Finance Committee and someone, either the the President or Vice President, to to be those two members.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Vickers, do you have any comments?
No, we probably should name a board member rather than by office. Because office will possibly change in January.
Correct. Did you want to name somebody?
I can volunteer myself if nobody else wants to volunteer as one of those members.
Okay. Is there any other comment? So you had suggested one of the offices, so possibly the President and Mr. Vickers?
That that would be acceptable, yes.
Okay. Mrs. Simoia, would you be willing to amend your motion?
Yes, we- I move to amend the motion to identify the board members by name. Mr. Vickers and a designated officer, either President or Vice President.
Do I have a second on the amended motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the amended motion? I'm going to call for a vote. Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The second was Mr. Bennett on the amended motion. Point of clarification, because we went with the amended motion, do we need to withdraw the regular motion, the first motion?
No. Just amended the existing motion that was on the table.
All right. We've done this before so many times that we've never done it the same way twice. So I've got to look that up. Never. Thank you very much. So that, Mrs. Simoia, you talked about two separate motions. Your first motion was on negotiating on the purchase. What is your second motion, please?
The second purpose for entering closed executive session was to discuss the transfer of land from the state of New Mexico to Los Angeles Schools. Regarding the transfer request of land, I would move to authorize the Acting Superintendent Chavez or her designee and two members of the Board to pursue the transfer of land.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm- Madam President, I would be willing to volunteer to be one of the board members to participate in that.
Thank you very much. Is there any other interest?
I wouldn't do it.
Mr. Bennett? Is there any other interest? Having no other discussion, Mrs. Simoia, would you be willing to amend your motion?
Yes, I move to amend the motion by adding the two named board members of Sonia Simoia and Mr. Bruce Bennett.
Thank you very much. Is there a second on the amended motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Having no other book- having no other discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Vickers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. We are at item or action or item R? Action is needed? Or no?
No.
One day I will get to this. One day, one day. I would stand for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
It's on.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a call for the vote. Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion will be Mr. Tally. That's okay. It was a cacophony up here.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned at nine thirty four P M. Thank you for your attendance. We hope that you have a happy holiday.